Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plan, design, review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final actions at the third council meeting of this month or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a zoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use, amendments or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at Carnegie Town Hall on our televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being telecast on CityLink and will be rebroadcast Friday at 7:00 p.m., Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and Wednesday at 1:00 a.m. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call to order this regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. At this time, the Planning Commission will approve the consent and regular agendas. The consent agenda items are... Denise, if you would read those.
Item number one, approval of the March 6, 2013 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is Platts. Item three is a 2013-0301 rezone RS2 residential district to the O Office District for allowed uses at the northwest corner of East 69th Street and future South Bonson Avenue. Item four, 2013-0303 rezone RD residential district to the RD2 residential district for allowed uses at the southwest corner of East 41st Street and South Faith Avenue. Item five, the 2013-0310 rezone O Office District to the RA1 residential district for allowed uses at East 77th Street and South Cliff Avenue. Item six, 2013-0312 rezone RD residential district to RA1 residential district for allowed uses at 1521 East 5th Street and 511 North Highland Avenue. Item seven, 2013-0314 rezone C2 general commercial and RA1 residential districts to O Office District for allowed uses at 600 South Main Avenue. Item eight, 2013-0308 conditional use permit in the RD residential district to allow multifamily use at 707 North Duluth Avenue. Item nine, 2013-0318 conditional use permit in C2 commercial district for a full-service restaurant within 250 feet of sensitive uses. Item 10, 2013-0311 preliminary subdivision plan for the Rejoice Lutheran Church addition located at the southwest corner of West 26th Street and South Katy Avenue.
Thank you Denise. Staff, would there be any additions or corrections to the consent agenda items this evening?
Yes, Steve Randall, City Planning Office. The petitioner for item five has requested that their item be withdrawn.
Thank you Steve, anything else? Is there anyone in the audience that would like one of the consent agenda items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, are there any commissioners that would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion in regards to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing item number five.
Thank you Steve. We have a motion, would there be a second?
A second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Consent agenda is approved. If you are here for a consent agenda item, you are free to leave. You're more than welcome to also stay, but if your item was a consent agenda item, that business is done this evening. We will now... Chair would entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the regular agenda, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Regular agenda is approved. Before we start the regular agenda, I would like to just make a few comments as to how our Commission works here. We ask everybody that wants to speak tonight to limit their conversation to five minutes. We don't do that to cut anybody off, we do that to try and accommodate as many people as we can. Typically, we will spend roughly in the neighborhood of about 45 minutes on any one particular item. After we're done taking public testimony, I will ask the Commission for a motion. We'll have a second, at which point that becomes a discussion period for us. Public testimony at that point is then closed. Commissioners can request staff to come back up and ask, answer any specific questions. And commissioners can ask anyone in the audience to come back up. But having said that, once public testimony is done, that kind of stops it as far as the conversation from the audience. Having went over that, staff, let's... Denise, if you'd be good enough to read item number 11, that's the first thing on our regular agenda.
Item 11 is a 2013-0315 rezone AG agricultural district to the CN Conservation O Office District, C2 commercial district, C3 commercial district, and C4 commercial district for allowed uses at southwest corner of West 85th Street and South Minnesota Avenue.
Jason?
Jason Bieber, Sioux Falls, City Sioux Falls Planning Staff. Yes, this is petition number 2013-03-15, request from the applicant Frank Pampalone of Walmart to rezone a property at 85th and Minnesota, the southwest corner. The owner of the property is Springdale Development, and they are proposing to rezone roughly 39.1 acres from the A1 agricultural district to the CN conservation district, O Office District, C2 neighborhood commercial, C3 community commercial, and C4 regional commercial. The applicant is proposing to construct 10 acres for future, or 10 lots, excuse me, for future commercial and office uses at this particular corner. The existing corridor development patterns have West 85th Street and South Minnesota Avenue are classified as limited access arterials. Can I go closer? Is limited access arterials and further South Dakota 100 is classified as a future highway. The proposed development concept plan is indicating a full access point along, at Audi and West 85th Street, which will be signalized. And they're also indicating a right-in, right-out on South Minnesota Avenue, however, access permits will need to be approved by engineering staff. This particular site is roughly half a mile from the northwest corner, Lot 2, to the nearest school, which would be Journey Elementary. Water is available to the site from South Audi Avenue and South Minnesota Avenue. Further, the sewer, the existing sanitary sewer system has availability and capacity for a development of this size, and they will connect across South Minnesota Avenue. The 2035 Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan indicates a subregional employment center for this intersection of 85th and South Minnesota Avenue. A subregional employment center is a commerce center with draw from outside of the community. The commerce center is typically at the intersection of a regional arterial interstate, principal roadway, and/or a major arterial roadway. It serves a more limited trade area for employment and shopping, so therefore is more spatially located. Is spaced approximately four to six miles apart and serves a market of 40,000 to 100,000 people. The subregional employment center includes 160 to 320 acres of commercial with no more, excuse me, 160 to 320 acres with no more than 50% commercial. The core zoning districts within this subregional employment center are C4 and C3 with supporting zoning districts including office, multifamily, residential business park, and institutional. The rezoning request is consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls designation for this area and complies with the acres and percentage of the commercial as stated in the subregional employment center. Further, the proposed development is surrounded by two limited access arterials, West 85th Street and South Minnesota Avenue, and one future highway, which is South Dakota 100 to the south. The proposed development is compatible with adjacent land uses on the north, south, east, and west side. However, a single-family residential neighborhood exists to the northwest across West 85th and South Audi Avenue, which has a high incompatibility rating adjacent to the proposed C4 commercial development. The submitted rezoning exhibit indicates the required land use transition as stated in Shape Sioux Falls. The applicant is proposing C4 in the central portion of the site, and then C3 in the northeast corner, and slowly transitioning to C2 as you head towards south Audi Avenue. Then finally to O Office for that northwest corner, which is Lot 2, adjacent to the single-family neighborhood. Further, the following factors should be, should also minimize some of the effects of the incompatibilities between this existing single-family homes to the northwest and the proposed commercial and office development. First, West 85th Street is a limited access arterial with 100 feet of right-of-way separating the uses. Second, separation distances are included in various land uses, restricting them from locating near sensitive land uses. Finally, buffering, landscaping, and screening will also be employed to minimize negative effects between the adjacent land uses. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan, the majority of the surrounding land use is compatible, and effective land use transition is proposed, and steps can be taken to minimize incompatibilities between the proposed office and commercial development and the existing single-family development to the northwest. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning. And myself or anybody else from the planning staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Jason, thank you. Commissioners, would there be any questions for Jason? Or any other staff? Jason, just a quick one. We've just approved a new zoning ordinance. Could you just briefly explain to everybody here and watching this evening the difference between C4, C3, and C2?
Under the new Shape Places zoning ordinance, the difference between C2, C3, and C4 is essentially building size. C2, you'd be allowed up to a 25,000-square-foot building. C3 would then step up to 75,000 square feet, and then the C4 would allow an unlimited size, hence the Walmart there in the middle.
Okay, thank you. What we're looking at tonight is a rezone, we'll then look at a preliminary plan. Prior to the new zoning ordinance, we would have, we would address this with a conditional use. That's no longer in place here. Once we put the zoning on this, the zoning's there, whether whatever store would happen to go there. Once we put C4 on it, C3, C2, it is that unless a petitioner were to come back and ask for a rezone from what we approved this evening?
Correct.
Thank you Jason. Any other questions for Jason? Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Hi, good evening. My name is Brian Cutting with Walmart Stores, Inc. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I want to address a couple of things. We're excited about this project, we're excited to move forward with the entitlement process tonight. Couple of things to address. First off, we want to thank, we have, you know, in this whole process of, you know, getting to this point tonight, we have been very involved, obviously, with the neighborhood, with the community, with the, with staff, with the City Council, with the Planning Commission. We want to express our gratitude and thanks to everybody. I mean, it's been a very truly collaborative process, and it has been a very professional, which, where do I go here? Very professional tone, very courteous tone, so we are grateful for that cooperation we've had, and we look forward to further cooperation with all parties. That being said, we do wish to say we have heard a number of concerns about this project, and I'm sure we'll hear those concerns tonight. We have heard concerns about the traffic loads, about the access points, about the transitioning, the zoning, the buffering, about the aesthetics of the structure, the signage, the lighting, the RVs, you know, the potential for RVs in the parking lot. We've heard concerns about safety, both in the shopping center and within the community, and, you know, drainage, watershed issues, that's to name a few. We've heard, we've heard many issues. Although we are here to talk tonight about zoning and land use specifically, I do want to address the community and the committee to say we have heard those concerns. We are working, you know, in cooperation with the community, with staff, and within our own organization to mitigate those concerns to the best of our ability. So we have heard you. So we are here to discuss the proposal, the 40 acres, and it's, you know, this is a mix, I think, as we looked at this in this iterative process, we looked at this originally when we submitted our plans, as a large block of C4 zoning. Again, hearing the concerns of the community, we have come back with some alternatives to say, hey, we can do C4 for the Walmart facility, buffering to an R3, I'm sorry, C3, C2 into an office as we get closer to the neighborhoods. The site here is interesting to us for a number of reasons. As staff pointed out, as Jason mentioned, this is a site that's located on three, currently two major arterials with a third coming soon. This is a typical place for a large retail operation, this is a, you know, a typical layout for a job providing center as we have proposed here. So, you know, Minnesota, 85th, the future State Route 100, we believe this gives us the necessary access to be able to have traffic flow in and out of the facility appropriately. It is consistent with the 2035 plan, the utilities are present, and we also believe this is a convenient shopping opportunity for our customers. You know, currently, we have our two stores, you know, centrally located in Sioux Falls on the east and the west. This provides us an opportunity to serve our customers with everyday low prices on, you know, on the everyday staples of life on the south side of the city. A couple of things that we've learned, you know, we were before you about a year ago at the 69th and Cliff site, and, you know, one of the things that we heard loud and clear was buffering. You know, we're up against this housing here, what do we do about this? And I think this site plan really, you know, shows what we have done to increase that buffer. We have 13 acres of outlots here. At 69th and Cliff, we're looking at one acre of outlot, one acre of office. We have 13 acres of outlots here between us and adjacent uses. I was actually out there with our land use attorney today, walking through the cornfield, you know, to physically get a presence of, you know, how far are we from nearby uses? And it is quite a far distance, from the front door of the Walmart to current Audi and 85th, you're looking at about three full football fields, just to get a perspective of distance from the store to the intersection. As I said, we look forward to continuing to work with the committee, with the council, with the neighbors, with the community, to make sure that we have a, you know, a sound, viable project here. And I just want to make sure that, you know, our project team is here, we have our engineers, our traffic engineers, myself, and others here to address your questions as they come up. So, we're grateful to be here, and we look forward to the testimony tonight.
Brian, thank you. Would the commissioners have any questions, Brian, at this time? Seeing none, thank you Brian.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address item number 11? For a minute there, I thought it was going to be easier than I thought.
Good evening. My name is Ross Wright, I'm a resident of Sioux Falls. I live fairly close to this area, and I'd just like to address Mr. Cutting's comments. I had an opportunity to meet with Brian and Walmart staff this morning as well at the residence of Bonita Schwan. Bonita lives at the corner there of 85th and Audi. And I think it's no secret that one of the concerns that residents have at that area is the effect on property values. I think it's our concern that Walmart's everyday low prices are not only going to apply to the goods that they sell, but also outside of their store, to our neighborhood and the property values in the surrounding area. If you look at that map, I think one of the things that people look at and they have questions about is the 45-degree angle moving from left to right. That would be the gas line that runs through a lot of our backyards, it goes through mine. I'm quite a ways away, but that really has this location kind of hemmed in in many respects. We learned this morning that the Minnesota Avenue right-in, right-out hasn't been approved yet. In fact, we don't even have a traffic study in yet. And so I find that concerning, that we could potentially move forward today and get an approval on a project where we don't even know what the traffic is going to be. And so, we did talk to a gal from Walmart who is doing the traffic study, and we asked her to also take into consideration the new schools that are going to be on Western. Clearly, those schools aren't open yet, but come next fall, when they're open for business and there's going to be lots of students coming and going, that traffic study that they're doing now, in many respects, is going to be a moot point. And so, that's another concern that we have, and we don't know yet what that's going to be. I think a lot of folks have expressed some concern that there appears to be, I guess, a fast-track mode here where we're going very, very quickly. And I think whenever you've looked at growth and how cities have grown, it's always been in their best interest to do so in a controlled fashion. And I've been assured that this is typical of the process, but just last night, this property was annexed into the prop, into the city. However, that won't be filed according to the city clerk until Saturday. I brought to the City Council's attention SDCL 9-19-13, and that basically requires a 20-day waiting period before that becomes within the city limits. So for now, although the annexation was approved, this property will not be part of the city limits until the 26th of April. Why that's important is, although it was Mr. Fifeley, whose opinion I respect, it was his opinion that this is an advisory board, simply making an advisory opinion, I would beg to differ. Your folks' meeting tonight was required to be publicly noticed. If you didn't, we'd have a violations of an open-meeting law. It was required to have an agenda. This item, as you know, was on the agenda. For that reason, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves just a little bit. I'm not saying delay the process forever, I'm saying wait and do so accordingly. Right now, as it stands, this property is within the joint jurisdictional ordinance area, meaning Lincoln County and their Planning Commission, actually by statute, is required to be brought in on this process right now. And they haven't had any meetings with you folks, to my knowledge, maybe I'm wrong on that. But there's also statutory language that points to that fact as well. So that's a concern. Secondarily, I guess, when you look at this picture, we have the transition from C4, which is the red, all the way to the top, moving from right to left as you move west, going C3, and then you see the last two lots in the northwest corner. They're essentially one acre lots, one is C2, the other one is zoned office. And if you look at your compatibility matrix, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but If you look at that compatibility matrix, essentially where Bonita Schwan's residence is, that would be the low-density residential, as it states, there you go, as it states on the staff report from the Planning Commission. If you look down, you see office is zone four, and as it relates to the abutting zoning and land uses on the staff report, it scores that as a compatibility rating of four. Yet, if you turn to the second page, it takes into account our concerns, which I think Mike Cooper and Jeff Schmidt, Jason, and the rest of the staff have done a very good job of listening to. It does take into account the fact that, it states that it's highly incompatible. And I'd like to call your attention to that highly incompatible language. Because if you look at the comprehensive plan, that language under high incompatibility states the new zoning district is incompatible with adjacent land uses. That residence at 85th and Audi isn't adjacent property by the definitions in the city's comprehensive plan. Because of that, it says any development proposal requires a planned unit development and extensive documentation to prove that external effects are fully mitigated. In general, proposed districts with this level of conflict should not be permitted. Examples include heavy industrial uses proposed on sites adjacent to low or medium-density residential uses. If you say, Ross, I disagree with you. I don't think it scores a one, I think it scores a two. Well, that's medium incompatibility, and that reads, "The new zoning district has significant conflicts with the new existing adjacent zoning districts. Major effects must be mitigated to prevent impact on adjacent zoning districts. A planned unit development should be required to minimize project impact and define development design. That may include significant buffers and screening, land use transitions, and other external operational impacts. Also, include methods from Policy 7 in the transition section of Chapter 5 Shape Places." Says, "Examples include community and general commercial development proposed against residential uses." So there, it's spelled out very clearly.
Thank you. I'm going to, went a little over what I wanted to start out. And once again, it's not to hear everything you want to say, it's to give everybody a chance to say anything. I happened to watch last night, I think most of us probably did, and once again, you've done a good job kind of summarizing where.
Thank you, Mr. Cutting. I appreciate it. And thanks to the commission.
I'll wait my speaking time so he can go ahead and finish. I heard that.
Well, I appreciate that. I'll step down so other speakers can have the podium, but if you'd like, I can be recalled, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, my friend.
Hello, I'm Bonita Schwan, a resident of Sioux Falls, and my home is located at 85th and Audi, right across the street from the main entrance of the 85th and Minnesota proposal. I respectfully submit this photo. This photo was taken from my, inside of my garage, looking out on my driveway, and the street sign, you will see there, it's Audi and 85th. And that is where the main entrance would be for the proposal that, before you tonight... that is where the main entrance would be for the proposal that, before you tonight, for the C4. I, of course, live in a single-family residence neighborhood, which receives the yellow designation, and which the city, when they added our single-family residences, by doing so, they must be accountable for that. And as Ross has shared with you, there needs to be the appropriate transition. So, as you can see from my garage, my driveway, that is not an appropriate transition. What I would be looking at there, under the new shaped zoning, possibly a 30-foot-high sign, right outside my driveway there. Of course, we do not have the traffic study in yet from the people who have proposed this development, but we've been given some numbers of increased traffic of 4,000 additional cars a day. Also, we did, and kindly and respectfully, did meet with Walmart representatives today. And in speaking to them, they did share with us that they would not consider anything other than a 24-hour store here, unlike they have in some other states and stores, close and not be open 24 hours. So, I would be looking at that main entrance, right from my home, which had a entrance for a 24-hour supercenter. And as Ross shared with you, that does not meet the requirements of the matrix. It does not make the city accountable for adding our single-family homes, and they are accountable for this. They approve that, and they need to stand by and be accountable for that. So, I respectfully submit the photo worth a thousand words right there. You can come to my driveway, my garage, and see how my life would change with the approval of a C4 here. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you, Bonita.
Yes, thank you.
It's my understanding that that corner is zoned RD, right?
RD?
RD.
No.
Well, that got changed last week. It was RD prior to last week's Shapes Sioux Falls. Is that correct?
Under the current Shapes, that was passed last week, it is yellow because there are only single-family residences in our neighborhood. And that is what it is today. And that is what the proposal before you today is coming under the Shapes, not the previous ordinances.
I understand exactly what you're saying. However, if you want us to look back and not, look back sometimes and look forward other times, I know that last week, when Shape was brought, this section was listed as RD. I believe there was an amendment to the Shape to have it zoned RS1. So, when this land was developed and when you built, it was RD. Is that correct?
What I understand is, what is ruling in this is what the current use is. And every home in our neighborhood is single-family homes. So, I do not contest what you are saying, and I respectfully submit, though, what is controlling is what the current use is. And that is why the city council took it upon themselves, specifically Councilman Stakers, to correct that mistake, because it is only single-family homes in that neighborhood.
And I would respectfully, I would disagree that it was a mistake. It was zoned RD, a developer chose to do something different, and now it's RS. So, it was the appropriate thing. But, it wasn't a mistake that it was zoned RD when it was zoned RD. That's what the developer wanted. So...
When I built my house, there were only single-family residences in that neighborhood. I was one of the last people to build in the neighborhood. I'm bumped way out there on the end, I do know that. There was nothing else there, other than single-family homes.
I grant you that.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rand Misco, and I do live in the neighborhood that is adjacent to the proposed rezoning area. And I'm a husband and father of two kids, with one soon on the way. And if you would follow Audi north, the street curves into West Glen Eagle Street. And from the corner of that curve from Audi to the next intersection, there are 40 children, 38 of them under the age of 10. And we estimate more than 250 kids live in the Twin Eagle Development. And so, I believe it's Meredith here at a meeting ago on Shapes in Places quoted something out of the thing of, part of the reasons of zoning is to protect the community, protect the residents of that. So, what I'm looking at here today, and a number of other folks behind me are looking at here today, is to do just that, is to protect those residential homes, to protect those families, protect those 250-plus children out playing in the yard and the streets and all that other sort of thing. And I think a way to help protect those families and those children is to avoid a large commercial development this close to that residential area. As you've heard several times before, people here are not against any particular brand of big-box store. They're pretty much against, or more, should I say, for their children, for their neighborhood, for their families. And many people here believe that a development such as this, directly across with the proposed traffic signal as the main entrance and exit, being placed right at the front door of this neighborhood with all these children. I think that really doesn't fit. I'm not an expert in city planning, so I do appreciate, excuse me, all that you do in this situation. But, I would like to stand here and hopefully add some context to this whole effort. And when we talk about Sioux Falls, Mayor Huether did reference Detroit in his Listening and Learning presentation on Saturday. He's glad that he's not in part of that area. I grew up just north of Detroit, and I lived there for almost 40 years before I moved to Sioux Falls. And part of the reason I still live in Sioux Falls is, I don't want to live north of Detroit anymore. And I don't want to live north of Detroit now. Not that this is north of Detroit by this development, but I don't want to get there either. So, I think what a lot of us would like to do in the neighborhood is look at other alternatives for the development of this area. And we will look at the Waterfall Place at Minnesota and 69th, or if I look at other smaller regional shops, or neighborhood shops, restaurants, and things like that, many of us would enjoy that sort of development. Many of people are looking for that. Because at the north side of 85th Street here, it's too far of a walk to get up to 69th Street, you know, over a mile if you're in that neighborhood. We would appreciate some smaller shops without having to deal with a 24-hour a night, all the light pollution, the noise pollution, and the potential for traffic, all the additional traffic that's been set up to, maybe even more than 4,000 vehicles a day, being delivered right to our neighborhood. In addition to that, one city council member called the Twin Eagle Heather Ridge area, one of the, I'm not going to misquote this, but one of the premier neighborhoods in Sioux Falls. And as a neighborhood group, we discussed what is the city doing around this area? And since the Shape Places, which was adopted, I guess we learned we're going to get big-box retail development in our back door. Where are our city pools? Where are our city parks for that particular area? Those are the things we'd like to do. We would like to have this maintain a residential community for families and children. We really would like to avoid something like that. So, for now, I respect all of you and all the hard work that's been done with Shapes in Places and the hard work you do. I ask that this is not, a C4 designation is not allowed in this proposal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeff Gould. It is, it's an honor to be here tonight. One of the things that I would like to, Jeff, if you could just show that map there. It's kind of a test for city shapes, you know, that we've got it into law. Just a point of clarification here. So, the C4 is for a structure that's 185,000 square feet, and the C3s are each for 75,000 square feet, right? So, that's like a Shields, is Shields 75,000? Lewis, one of the bigger ones. So, we're looking at a very major area. And right now, we're trying to decide if Minnesota Avenue is going to handle that, or more importantly, 85th Street and Audi. And we're also going to look and see, when is South Dakota 100 going to be here to help us with this traffic? Now, one of the things that I find interesting about city planners is that they must do the virtually impossible. They must look out to the future and predict what is going to happen to Sioux Falls. Not 10 years from now, but 30 years from now. My goodness. So, they do the best they can by looking at the economies in the world and development and growth, and they just put out a guess, and that's the city shapes that we have. What will the city of Sioux Falls look like in the year 2035? So, for example, the green dot is kind of what we're talking about. What's that called, Jeff? Regional?
Subregional.
Subregional. There's the green dot. There's one of the green dots that are around the city. And you can see that that is at...
57th and Highway 11.
57th and Highway 11. And this is, the maps underneath kind of show the visual of that, just the pictures. Take the next one. So, that's kind of what we're talking about there. That's looking at one way. And we're just looking to the future and seeing what this might look like in 2035, and what it looks like today. Or, more importantly, what it looked like, say, in the year 2005, when city planners were out there in front, trying to guess what the city might look like in the year 2035. And it looks like there's really not much around, as far as the eye could see. We have the elements of traffic that are starting to work above and south. This South Dakota 100 is just kind of in that area, and we expect that to grow south. Okay, next, we have an idea for another residential, I'm sorry, regional...
Sub.
Subregional. This green dot up there at the interstate. Now, the blue line you see is, again, South Dakota 100. And we are hoping that that will be in existence in the year 2035. We're not necessarily certain about that. We weren't sure what was going to happen with the economy in the year 2008. So, this was sort of preliminarily started before we had that stop in the economy. But our gas is going to be in the year 2035. There will be a hookup there, and we'll have, again, subregional areas. That is so rural now, I didn't get any pictures of that. I do have this from 60th and Marion Road. That's another area that's going to be subregional. Pictures around. And we can see that we have, looks like good traffic. We have some commercial properties there. Next one, then. And we have heading west. Next slide. Again, this is, this is the plan that is looked out to the future. What's it going to look like? Can we put the 75,000 to 185,000 square-foot shopping here? And it looks like there is room. Looks like we don't see a lot of residential issues. Okay. Here we have the T Ellis Road. T Ellis to the west. Let's take a look and see what happens with that dot. And we see, will we have issues? Well, it's going east. We do have some possible issues. You can see houses in the background there. We also see, basically, it's not a lot beyond that. So, we can see that perhaps in 30 years, this might also have this element of growth. What's happened since we started this, just look at 2004. This is, this is an overhead of the area we're talking about in the year 2004. Okay, so, it's all plotted. Where am I at? Where's 85th Street? It's got to be faced. Can you face it north and south? There we go. Move it forward so we can see what we're talking about. Okay, there's 77th, there's 85th Street. Do you see? It's all been plotted, but there's no, in the year 2004, roughly when they were looking at the Shapes Sioux Falls, there was nothing out there. So, we took the guess of what it would look like for regional shopping, and then what happened? Development happened. Next slide is 2008. Now, this is 2008. You can see how many houses were there, and they were built under the assumption of the 2015 plan. This has not yet been formally adopted yet, so they were still looking at a smaller development in the corner, and I think we're expecting that. But now, we can see that it's already filled up. You can see Journey Elementary up there to the north. And then we get to the year 2012, which is the next one. And we can see that already, we have outgrown our own plan. That already, we have residential adjacent to what is expected. You can put that crude drawing there of, okay, that's my crude drawing of Walmart there. So, that already, we can see that beyond our understanding, that residential has outstripped our plan, at least in this section of town. So, the issue isn't really, though, with Minnesota and 85th Street. Probably my concern would be more of this. This is the intersection of Audi and 85th. In the Shapes plan, they were talking about major intersections, not a residential street. That's a small thing across the culvert there. That's going to be roughly where the entrance to Walmart would be. Next slide. And then you can see residential, as we talked about there. And you can just see the beginning of Bonita's house and keep going around the corner there. And you can see that we have, we have residence right there. Now, I heard the man talk about how far away the entrance to Walmart will be, but the concern is really going to be the traffic. And it's going to be right down this residential road. And I'm not talking, good to make your map up, please, if you would, Jeff, just the one we started with.
Jeff, you're showing us a lot of stuff I think we're aware of.
Okay.
We get it.
Okay. All right. So, I guess, if I could just wrap it up...
I'd like to go a little extra time here.
All right.
Bring it to a head, and we'll let somebody else come up to it.
I'm on my last point. My last point is this. In summary, the plan was that 85th Street in Minnesota would work, that South Dakota 100 would be there in 2035. What we're seeing instead is the reality is that the residents have moved too far close to it, and that the green dot, for want of a better term, should be moved further south, not just so it fits the plan and fits with the guidelines of the plan, but for the safety of the neighbors and the possible liability if we should have an accident, which I don't want to see.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff? Thank you, my friend.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening. Trent Swanson, I live right down the street along 85th Street, back up to 85th Street, about a quarter-mile west of the, at least the current proposed access point for this development. I had the fun task today of looking over city ordinances and the comprehensive plan. And quite honest, I didn't get all the way through them. It was quite a task. But, one of the things I noticed in looking at the comprehensive plan, the 2035 plan, if you look at the shaped neighborhoods, one of the, one of the chapters of the plan, it talks about the allocation of future land use. So, it talks about trying to allocate similar uses together, so the commercial on the north, or, excuse me, the commercial at the intersection of 85th Street and Minnesota would be allocated equally amongst those four different lots. And I think if you go, at least with the new Shape Places ordinance, what's proposed on the north side, I think, is roughly 12 acres, if I remember correctly. About 17 acres to the east, to the northeast, it would be, I think, 15 or so acres, 15 to 20. So, obviously, this is 40 acres, a significantly higher allocation than what you see on the other, other three corners of the intersection. So, I think this plan is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan for that reason. Second thing, I was looking at the shaped transitions, and Jeff, do you mind throwing that up there? You know, we've been talking a lot about transitions. We had the opportunity to meet with the Walmart representatives and the developers' representatives this morning. We had a productive meeting, but obviously, transition's a big issue. If you jump down, Jeff, sorry, if you can jump down to points five and seven on... If you jump down, Jeff, sorry, if you can jump down to points five and seven on that commercial site design requirements, what chapter, what this chapter says is, you avoid high dense, high intensity land uses that are adjacent to low density residential, which is obviously what the previous speakers talked about. You jump down to number seven, it says, "require significant transitional land uses from commercial to single-family residential land uses." Now, the plans changed since it was originally presented to, to planning for rezoning. We've got the, the small office lot at the northwest corner of the proposed development. Essentially, what they've done is, they had, if I remember correctly, they had eight lots previously, and those were all to be commercial. Now, what they've done is taken and made a small, one-acre lot on the northwest corner, as you see right there. Previously, those, one, lots one through seven, excuse me, two through seven, would have been lots two through six. So essentially, they have the same number of lots, they just have a, in order to try to meet the transition, the buffer, they've taken that, those lots and divided them up, and you have the same number of lots, you just have a small office. And, you know, I would contend, that's not a significant enough transition to the single-family residential areas. If you could go back, Jeff, to the, Steve, if you've got it. Also, in that Shaped Transitions chapter, talks about employment centers should normally have commercial land uses located at the first full street or highway access point. Obviously, what's been proposed, I know there's a lot of questions yet about access here, but what's presently proposed is that the first access point be on Audi Avenue. Traditionally, what you'd expect then, based on the comprehensive plan, that would be your highest intense commercial, most intense commercial area, and you'd work your way to less, lesser density residential in the back. You know, the access point here and that point in the Shaped Transitions is incompatible. And then finally, the last point I want to leave you with. Like I said, I pulled the ordinances this morning, one of them being the process of rezoning property, which is what you guys are considering tonight. And it clearly states, if you go down, this is 160.052. And if you look at D, it says right in there, "Whenever the proposed change of boundaries or regulations affects the area outside the city limits," which is what we're dealing with tonight, "no amendment, supplement, or change in any area shall be effective unless the county planning commission of the county in which the area lies shall sit with the city planning commission, and both commissions make a recommendation to the city council and the board of county commissioners." I don't believe that's been done. I could be mistaken. But that's the last point I want to leave you with and just ask how, you know, that's going to be addressed. Do you have any questions?
Trent, thank you. I appreciate that. Would there be any questions for Trent?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dana Palmer. I live in the area of 85th and Minnesota. My three little boys attend Journey Elementary at 77th and Grange. They will attend the middle school just south of 85th and Minnesota, and they will eventually attend the high school just off of Minnesota in Harrisburg. I put up on the overhead Mayor Mike Huether's statement from yesterday. Safety is paramount, and that's why we're here tonight. These are the words of our city's Mayor Mike Huether. You guys, this commission will tell us by its decision tonight whether you also believe that this is true. Much of the opposition here tonight has nothing to do with Walmart, per se. Rather, it has to do with the efforts to rezone the land on the southwest corner of 85th and Minnesota to C4. And while you're certainly all aware of what's allowed under C4, I think much of the public is in the dark about what can actually occur on this land should it be zoned C4. According to Shaped Places, C4 is intended to be the most intensive business use area in the city. Appropriate land uses include malls, big box stores, super grocery stores, warehouse clubs, department stores, and furniture stores. And with a special use permit, C4 allows for drive-through restaurants, bars, liquor stores, and sexually oriented businesses. C4 is regional in nature, and people travel across the city to do business at these locations. C4 centers attract shoppers from all over the city and the surrounding region. C4 buildings have no size restrictions. And as you know, there is no longer a special use permit process that anyone has to follow in order to get a larger building.
Hang on just a second. Jeff's going to help you with the...
This type and scope of retail and commercial development is incompatible with and not suitable for this area that is single-family residential, not only because of the types of businesses it will allow, but because of the traffic that such a development will generate. Given the nature of this residential neighborhood, we clearly have a huge number of families with young children. In fact, there are four schools within one single mile of this proposed C4 development. A preschool is on 85th, and a new elementary school and middle school that are due to open this fall are just off of 85th Street and can be accessed only from 85th Street at this point. Finally, Journey Elementary, where my children attend school, is a mere half-mile from this proposed development. You may not be aware, but we have 426 students at Journey Elementary. Do you know how many buses we have that serve our school? One, because they all walk and ride their bikes to school. I've heard many times from city officials and Walmart about the traffic study that will address these concerns. This traffic study has, however, been bought and paid for by Walmart. You'll have to excuse my distrust for a study paid for the, paid for by the entity that hopes to develop this land. I come from a legal background where paid expert witnesses are seen as biased and not impartial. I would ask you, for the safety of our families, for the sanctitude of our neighborhood, please deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Becky Clemmie. I live on South Audi Avenue. My house is about 700 feet from the proposed Walmart store entrance on 85th and Audi. I speak tonight because I have serious concerns about the amount of traffic that will be flowing through that intersection. I have two small girls, and if this proposal goes through, it would create an intersection that would rival 41st and Louise for traffic. And it would put it within 700 feet of where my kids ride their bike, shoot baskets, and wait for the school bus. I think we've all been on Louise Avenue on a Saturday morning, trying to get into the Walmart store, and I think we'd all agree that we don't want our kids riding their bikes there. I moved into my house within the last one year. In moving in, I knew that there was open land and that there was a possibility that it would be developed for commercial use. Of course, we all hope that it would be a library, or a swimming pool, or a park, which are lacking on the south side of Sioux Falls. I really value the quietness of this neighborhood and the proximity to the elementary schools. I never imagined that a business as big as Walmart could be placed anywhere within a residential neighborhood. I thought that the Sioux Falls city worked to promote harmonious land uses and to protect its citizens. I've lived in Sioux Falls my whole life, and I can't think of another area where residential and business areas would be so closely enmeshed. I spent some time on the Sioux Falls City website today. Under the Planning and Building Services section, the mission statement is defined as the following. "The Planning and Building Services Department is responsible for managing the orderly development of Sioux Falls and for overseeing the protection of property, along with ensuring public safety in building, construction, and maintenance." I think that if this proposal goes through, that we will fail to meet that mission when it applies to my neighborhood. There was obviously a lack of orderly development in allowing residential, single-family homes to be placed so close to 85th Street if this is how it was intended to be developed. I also feel that the protection of the property of every owner in the neighborhood would be neglected if this goes through. And most especially, I feel that the intense amount of traffic would endanger the safety of every person that calls this residential neighborhood their home. I am in no way opposed to a Walmart on the south side of Sioux Falls, but I urge you to please zone this area appropriately to allow there to be a buffer of smaller businesses, multifamily living, and then allow the Walmart store to be placed appropriately, further out with appropriate access sites to help with the flow of traffic and not just one entrance site. I realize that our opposition puts a hurdle in front of what many view as a benefit to the Sioux Falls community, but in reality, we're dealing with a big business. If they want to put two more stores in Sioux Falls, then they're going to put two more stores in Sioux Falls. It just doesn't have to be right here. I struggle because I feel that how can our voices, the voices of the people in our neighborhood and the people that are present here tonight, be heard when we stand against such a big business? I think that the city of Sioux Falls has allowed these, these homes to be here. The reality is that they're here. This area is full of kids, families, and schools, and it's not an appropriate area for commercial use. Thanks.
Becky, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Jeff to come up? Could we get Jeff up in front for a second? I have some questions. Jeff, what's the timeline for turning Minnesota, or extending Minnesota to Harrisburg? Is that 2015?
Correct. It's under design right now, and they will construct Minnesota Avenue south in 2015.
And it's still a state highway?
And it's still a state highway.
And how long before 85th Street is turned into a four-lane?
It's currently two lanes in the north. The two lanes to south haven't been constructed yet, or additional lanes. How long? At the public open house we had, I told the neighbors generally, three to seven years in that five-year timeframe. We don't go out and build those arterial streets until they're needed. So since there's no development out there at this point, there's no commercial activity, we don't build the roads until they're there.
So the traffic's going to be there regardless of...
Correct.
What's on that corner?
It's programmed for four-lane with turning movements at these quarter-mile, half-mile access points, whether there's C4 Walmart there, or C2 or C3. That's one of the other things I was trying to look for. I sent the three directors in City Hall, the populate, or the traffic projections. Currently, the neighbors are absolutely correct. There's like 1,200 vehicles a day out in this area. In the future, Minnesota Avenue, and again, I'm trying to look for the email, but I, the traffic projections in 2035 show, I think, 17,000 vehicles a day on Minnesota Avenue and 12,000 vehicles a day on Minnesota. That's the 41st and Louise that everybody refers to as 50,000 vehicles a day. So this isn't 41st and Louise.
Right.
You said Minnesota twice.
85th would be 12,000 vehicles a day, and Minnesota Avenue would be 17,000 vehicles a day. So significantly more, significantly more than it is now. We understand that. But that's just based on the growth and development of Sioux Falls that we're projecting out. We already projected out commercial development on this corner to look at type of roadways to the year 2035.
Thank you. Jeff, why don't you sit down for just a couple of minutes? We've been on this now for 45 minutes. I see a young lady in red that I'm going to allow your testimony, and then we will, we'll close it. Oh my gosh, it's Gary Hanson, our old mayor.
Looked like a lady in red.
Hello, Gary.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, commissioners. My name is Gary Hanson, and I feel compelled to speak because my daughter told me to speak.
That's the lady in red?
Yes, that's the lady in red. During, as, during my eight years as mayor, my nearly eight years as Utilities Commissioner for the city of Sioux Falls, back prior to us having a strong mayor form of government, I spent a great deal of time looking over these types of situations. So I certainly appreciate and empathize with you on, on the challenges that you have. And we all appreciate the, the amount of time that you give to the, to the city. This particular development, as I looked at it for the first time some time back and met with the neighbors and started looking at it, I, I was certainly troubled by the fact that, well, number one, that I helped draw the line originally for Highway 100 some 20-some years ago. But we had anticipated, like has been explained to you, we anticipated growth to be in a slightly different fashion. And as I looked at this particular development, our proposal, I, I didn't intend to speak until I saw that plat earlier that showed the, the traffic. And I'm not sure how much you deal with the traffic. I know that there's some, been, been some ordinance changes since I left. But when I looked at that, it really troubled me that we're basing regional plans on location of two highways, which, which is appropriate. But the challenge is that those, the traffic from those two highways goes over onto a, a street, granted, a busy street. We recognize, and the residences recognize, that that's going to be developed into a, an arterial street to an extent. But it's placing all of the traffic on 85th Street. I mean, none of us here would design a store from that standpoint. And I, I really don't think that a traffic engineer would have presented this to me that, as, as mayor, that it would have gotten to my desk. I really don't believe it would have. There, there's significant challenges when you look at a right and a left turn on the Minnesota Avenue. There's significant challenges with all the traffic that comes from the south. It's going to have to make either a U-turn and come back down to make that right turn, or it's all going to be routed over onto one intersection. And as I looked at this, I tried to play with different ideas. Do we, should there be some type of a, a service street? Should there, should we try to bend 85th Street? You know, what do you, what do you do with this to make it right? Because it's appropriate that that's commercial, and, and that's what your job is here. But really, Audi just should not exist. That should be, that just should not be a street there at all on the, on the south side. And the only way that I can personally see to fix this is if they came straight out of the Walmart between lots, and I, you can't get too close to Minnesota Avenue because you've got to have stacking. But perhaps somewhere in Lot 5, maybe closer to where Lot 4 is, but you could have an intersection there, just a T-intersection, of course, it wouldn't go north. But then all of the traffic would route to that location. You would eliminate the 30-foot sign, you know, nobody wants a 30-foot sign, a kitty corner from their, from their home, and then have just monument signs along 85th Street. And I think that would go a long ways to, to solve the challenge that you have with the, the residential area being there. And it's, it's no fault of the folks that are there. You know, granted, it might have been RD, but RD is still residential, and it is now RS1. It is, there is a residence there. So from that perspective, it's what can we do, working together, to solve the challenge that's in front of us? It's not a Gregorian's dot. We can, we can untie it. We can figure out what to, what to do with it. And I really think that if you place the street in that particular location, you'll solve a lot of, a lot of the challenges. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gary, thank you so much for your comments.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
Mr. Chair. Just to follow on to what Gary's saying, I've been thinking about this, looking at this site plan, and wondered why the site plan couldn't be flipped to put the parking on the south side and actually get an entrance, signalized entrance off Minnesota?
Mr. Chairman, if I could...
Yes.
Commissioner Larson, my, I originally looked at that, that way, too, and trying to have a, a service street along there. I don't know if the trucks, now, there's going to be a tremendous number of trucks, and that brings to another point about traffic. All, you know how many trucks there probably are going to and from Walmart. They're not going to be making a U-turn on Minnesota Avenue to come back down to make a right turn in.
No, I, Gary, I was saying that if you flip this site plan over, put the parking on the south side of the building, number one, it's a much better exposure facing south for the building.
I meant...
Snow and ice. And then actually, instead of a right in, right out, maybe you're far enough from 85th to have a signalized intersection there, so there's not a right in, right out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that is what I had mentioned to the developer and talked to them about that, and they mentioned the amount of trucks. They said that you're going to have all the trucks going to the back door, and then that traffic is going to be towards the, towards the, the residential area. But at, at the same time, I don't think it's a, a bad idea, because if you have the C3 in that location with the businesses and with the buffers, with the berms, with the trees, et cetera, you're probably diminishing the amount of, of truck traffic. And if that gets you to the point where you can have a Minnesota access, which I don't know if you, if you can configure that or not, then you'd certainly solve, you're absolutely right, Commissioner, you'd really solve the problem because you have the traffic coming off of Minnesota Avenue then.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've, we've, we've visited about this for a lot of time.
Commissioner, you'd really solve the problem because you have the traffic coming off of Minnesota Avenue then instead.
Right.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've visited about this for a lot of time. Chair would entertain a motion on this particular item so we can get to a discussion process and perhaps visit a little bit more with staff with some questions we might or might not have.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, for the sake of discussion, I would make the motion to approve the rezoning. I do concur with what Gary just mentioned relative to access. We're not here to deal with access or traffic. We're delving into something that's probably more appropriate to item number 12. But if you consider the 2035 plan and the fact that you are at the intersection of two state highways and an arterial, I think the appropriate zoning here is commercial. I can't imagine what other types of development you'd be able to achieve here.
Let's get a second to your motion, and then we'll have a little bit more discussion, Meredith. Would there be a second?
I'll second.
Meredith, would you like to follow up or finish up with...
I can. I would certainly like to maybe have Jeff address the notion of a signalized intersection off Minnesota because right now, this site plan does drive the bulk of the traffic to the west. Oh, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you. Mike Cooper, Planning and Building Services. As part of the zoning review process, as we've said to a number of groups, the task of the planning commission is really to look at the land use. And of course, it's hard to look at land use without looking at traffic impacts. They do kind of interact with each other, obviously. But obviously, the primary focus tonight is, does the proposed zoning meet the comprehensive plan? You've heard the debate, yes and no. And so your motion is really to determine what your recommendation is going to be as this moves forward to the city council. But having said all that, there is a traffic study that's currently in process, and what we've said is that that will be done prior to any final city council action on your recommendation for both the zoning and the subdivision plan. So that traffic study is going to look at all potential options for access, including both 85th Street and Minnesota Avenue. But for tonight, the Minnesota Avenue frontage, you have 85th Street, and then you have the future SD 100. Both of those intersections will be signalized. So typically, so typically, you would not have a third signal in between those two. That's why, at least for now, we're showing the potential of a right-in, right-out. On 85th Street, you'll have a signal at Minnesota Avenue. You'll have another signal at Grange, which is a half a mile. Audi is a quarter mile. Is that going to be the signalized intersection? We're going to look at other options. I'll still call him Mayor Gary Hanson because I had the pleasure of working for him. He does bring up an excellent point, and we are going to be looking at that as a part of the traffic access plan.
Thank you.
So that's a very long answer to that important item.
No, I knew that you weren't going to be able to give us a definitive answer. I appreciate that. That being said, I'm going to...
Oh, Mike, 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 oh, no.
Support...
Come back up here.
Support the motion, so.
I thought Meredith had some more to say, but I do have a couple other questions if you'd...
For me?
You bet. I was going to pick on Jeff, but seeing you're here this evening...
Well, these people have seen so much of my backside, so they might as well do it tonight, too.
The actual process of the engineering, the draining, we really don't deal with that. What we do, your engineering department will sit down and review this, both for traffic, for drainage, for whatever. If they have some concerns, they will address that with you and the petitioner?
Well, item 12 is the preliminary subdivision plan, and that's the first step in looking at all the engineering details. It has preliminary utilities, drainage, and grading. That's the first step. And then, prior to any actual building, there will be more detailed engineering plans put together. And then, as building permits are requested, there's even more detailed engineering plans that are submitted. So that's the process.
And I'd like the folks to know that. I mean, once it leaves us this evening, we won't look at this again as far as a planning commission, I don't believe.
That's correct, unless there's some other amendment or other rezoning that would be brought forward in the future.
Mike, is there anything you heard either last night? There was some awfully good discussion. I think there's been some good discussion here this evening. We're citizens that kind of are pointed to this, and when we get a recommendation from you and your staff, I think that weighs very heavy with us. We look at you folks as the professionals, that you have studied this issue. Naturally, it's a hot button. We went through this one time before at 69th and Cliff. I think you were aware of that. This body felt that was a good site for that particular type of zoning. It then went to council and was decided that it wasn't. Is there anything you've heard either last night or tonight that would change staff's recommendation to us?
It would not, and City Attorney Dave Fieffley is here tonight. If you have questions about the question of the legality of acting on this tonight, we believe that it is proper for you to take action on this tonight because your recommendations will not be considered by the city council until that 20-day effective period is in place. But I'll just throw one more comment out, and I've said this to other groups, that as we've historically looked at major commercial development areas, the examples that Jeff Gould, Mr. Gould presented, I think, were really great examples. You would not see this type of development proposed in those areas because there's no residential close by. So that's the struggle that we've dealt with over the years, is that the commercial uses usually don't come until there's at least some rooftops in the area. You know, and then that's when we get the conflict between existing homes and proposed commercial development. We had the same issue on the east side with the ShopCo, with Lewis Drug, with Hy-Vee. On the west side, with the Lorraine Town Center, with the Hy-Vee, there were single-family residences right across the street on Marion Road when that was first brought in for development. We heard the same concern. So we know what neighborhoods feel about an invasion into their neighborhood of something like this, and that's why we've tried to develop our long-range planning and our standards, our codes and all that. And we do try to do as good a job as we can with everything from the land use down to the details of where the landscaping is going to go and the type of lighting. So that's...
Mike, if I struggle with anything, it's that house on the corner of Audi and 85th. I sit and I go, how did that house end up there? Kind of knowing what the future plan was for perhaps that corner. And I realize, and I'm not saying it was planning's fault, what I think I heard was that a developer come in and asked for some zoning on that that typically creates a buffer for commercial to residential, but it also gave them the option of doing single-family there. I sympathize with this lady. It's easy to sit and say, gee, you shouldn't have done it. It's your fault. But in the same breath, I kind of go, well, was it somebody like us, a committee like ours fault many, many years ago when the developer came in to develop that particular parcel of ground? Would that have been the time for our group to have said, wait a minute? You know, here's what is planned here. Here's what's coming. We don't want to see residential on that particular corner. And it's, you know, it's hindsight.
It is, and it is. As we've moved forward with shaped places, one of the major initiatives is to try to prevent that from happening in the future so that when property is zoned a certain type of residential, that's what it's going to be. But I will say that I think what's being presented tonight for your consideration is different than the original petition. And I would say that even if the access changes along 85th or Minnesota, I think those zoning transitions are still important up on that north side and particularly on the northwest side.
Mike, I think whatever happens here tonight, I don't think this issue is done. I think, pass or fail, this is going to go to the city council, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
I believe, yeah. And having said that, thank you. Would anyone else have any questions?
Before Mike sits down.
Yeah, I got a question, too. Go ahead, Dave.
Can I get you back, Mike? Does it concern you that one of the persons who spoke here...
Denny, your mic's not on.
My mic's not on.
How's that?
We can hear you now.
Now you're going to get it. Does it concern you at all that it was pointed out by one of the opponents that we have not had any contact, if it's true, with Lincoln County?
That is correct, and again, our procedure has followed the same path many, many times, that when property is annexed by the city council, then we can take it forward to the planning commission.
So it could, we'll be coming at a later point?
No, the property, the city council last night approved the annexation.
Interesting. It seems to be a direct conflict with what was stated.
Well, I'll ask if you would like our city attorney to speak.
Yeah, I think we should get it clarified.
Yep.
Good evening, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave Fieffley with the city attorney's office. Denny, to answer your question, that 9-19-13 requires that any ordinance or, sorry for the reverb, a resolution that's passed by the council has to be published in the local newspaper, and then there's 20 days after that publication before it becomes effective. What happens, since you folks meet only on a monthly basis, what often happens is items are put in the chute, so to speak, is how I would term it, where you are an advisory body, all you're doing is making a recommendation. This is providing the public with another opportunity to weigh in on this issue, but no council action would take place on the item until May 7th at the earliest, which would be well beyond those 20 days. And we use as a benchmark for our office about 25 days after that meeting. And I believe this one will be effective on or about April 26th, so it'll be effective way before the council would consider it. So all you are doing, and again, we appreciate your involvement as citizens, you are just weighing in, providing citizen income, input, excuse me, for a recommendation to the council. And as has been said, the action is to be taken by the council. You folks are only making a recommendation, and certainly, you're weighing the public opinion and doing it in a very considerate way, and we appreciate your service.
Thank you for that clarification.
Did anyone else have a question for David? Steve, I thought I saw your hand going up there.
I did, but Denny asked, he was reading my mind. He read, that's the same question I had for Dave. I wanted to know the legality of this, that we weren't overstepping our bounds tonight.
Mr. Chairman, it's your prerogative to do so, but I would be interested, I don't know if the rest of the commissioners would be interested, in hearing a little bit more from Mr. Wright. He did go over his five minutes, but I think there might, in my mind, I was curious of what he had to say.
I'm sorry. Say that again, from who?
Mr. Wright, Mr. Ross Wright. I kind of forgot about him.
Well, you're totally Ross, and we've got a commissioner that'd like you to come back up here and finish your presentation.
It's my fault.
That's fine.
Dave and I get along well, and I said last night, the nice thing about practicing laws, you can disagree without being disagreeable. And I have a, I guess, the contrarian position to what Dave would say. Your decision tonight is not merely an advisory opinion. You're not sitting merely as an advisory board. Actually, the decision you're going to make tonight is required by statute. If you don't make this decision to put this before the city council on the 16th for their first reading and then the second reading on May 7th, I don't think they could go forward. They would need your decision, and that's, again, statutorily required. So it's not just, oh, yep, we think it's a good idea, and that's the problem. And if I point out... This is the other statute that I think is a sticking point, because as the city clerk said last night, this doesn't get filed until Saturday, and this being the annexation that was decided last night. So we've got 20 days from the date of publication, as Dave said. He's absolutely correct. That statute then would, you know, or the annexation would be published in a paper or what have you, but then that would become effective on April 26th. So this land isn't annexed into the city until that date. So right now, it's not within the city limits. It's not within the municipality. It falls within the joint jurisdictional ordinance zone. And because of that fact, I'd like to call your attention to that statute that I've got highlighted there, and that's where I believe the argument can be made, and I think it's a darn good one, that the Lincoln County Planning Commission also has to weigh in on this, and it's got to be done so on a joint basis. Mike is correct, and Mike being Mike Cooper. We've done this this way, which is about to happen tonight on other projects, but I've also personally been present where we've done it the way that I'm suggesting, where we've gone ahead. I've appeared in front of the city council and in my role as a public servant, and we've done this with the joint jurisdictional force of both counties. And so that's just the other side of the coin. So I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to share that with you.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you. Depends upon which attorney you want to listen to.
It's a great thing about the law.
Commissioners, would there be other questions or clarifications that we need from anybody at this point in time?
I recognize that Travis made a good point when he pointed out Shapes Sioux Falls and that we look to have parallel-sized properties across from each other. And in a perfect world, that would probably be exactly what we would do, but where we have two state highways coming together, it landlocks this piece of land, and I can't imagine residential wanting to be along Highway 100 at this juncture. And so as it relates to item number 11, I would agree with Meredith. I don't know what else it can be other than some significant commercial or a commercial It's how we've set out our planning and our zoning, and again, I do really respect what Ross has said. He's been here at several meetings, and I so appreciate that people do pay attention and that they read the code, and Ross read the code before he really even had to because he's been here the last three months in a row. And it does make a difference as to how things happen. But I totally understand Travis's point. I think it's one well-made, but this is a perfect example of an imperfect, you know, plat that's left between an arterial collector and two major state highways. So makes sense to rezone.
Thank you, Jesse. Any other comments from any of the commissioners?
Well, Mr. Chairman, from all the testimony I've heard tonight, both pro and con, I'm just a little uncomfortable in voting to recommend to the council that this be approved, because after all, that's what our job is, is to recommend. And it appears, from the feeling I'm getting, that we're going to have a due pass on this. I'm going to vote no.
Appreciate that, Denny. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make? I'm getting ready to call the question. We've had a motion. We've had a second. And all in favor of the motion, should we read the motion one more time? Uh, and all in favor of the motion, should we read the motion one more time?
It was a motion to approve the rezone for agricultural district to the CN Conservation O Office District, C2 Commercial District, C3 Commercial District, and C4 Commercial District for allowed uses at southwest corner of West 85th Street and South Minnesota Avenue.
Thank you. All in favor, I'll signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
Could I have a show of hands? Uh, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand? Three, four. So we've got a four to two, motion passes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your, uh, your comments, and, uh, we appreciate you having come down here. Denise, if you would read the next item on our agenda.
Item 12, 2013, O317, preliminary subdivision plan for the proposed Springdale development located at the southwest corner of West 85th Street and South Minnesota Avenue.
Steve, why don't we wait just a couple minutes?
Just the way I feel. Thank you. There's still some very good credibility left here.
Are you ready, Steve?
Uh, the next item, Steve Randall, City Planning Office, and I'll present this item as a subdivision plan with your recommendation to the city council for approval or, uh, whatever your recommendation is. Uh, the plan that's presented here meets all the criteria for a subdivision, uh, plan application to the city of Sioux Falls that is currently, uh, being reviewed by the city engineers. It does require your recommendation and the recommendation of the city engineer to proceed to the city council. With that said, uh, and it meeting all the requirements, the presentation is basically what you just heard for the rezoning. We have seven, uh, excuse me, we have 10 lots, uh, presented in the zoning districts that you have just approved or recommended for approval. Uh, the acreages for those lots are indicated in your chart, uh, to total 40 acres, 39.1 acres, uh, the largest being a C4 parcel, which is 22.3 acres. Street wide away actually is included as approximately two acres. This subject property, when annexed and, uh, zoned, becomes effective, uh, then we'll proceed into a development engineering phase in which the, uh, grading, drainage, utilities, uh, street plan will be finalized for development, plating, transfer of ownership, and development. The proposed zoning districts allow future development with, uh, forms indicated in the Shapes Sioux Falls. Uh, we've been through that with a variety of forms that are allowed. We understand what the form, uh, will be applied to the C4. Uh, the other forms allowed, there's a little flexibility yet in the C3, C2, and office zoning districts for the forms that could be applied to those lots. Uh, we may see a lessening of intensity. Uh, that is certainly possible as those developments occur. Development engineering plans, uh, that comply with respective chapters within the engineering design standards for final grading and drainage, uh, utilities and groundwater control shall be approved or disapproved within 15 working days after submission to the city engineer. In addition, a final lot and block layout shall be approved by the city engineer and the city director of planning and building services as required. If these plans are approved, the developer then may submit plats for approval. That would include building permits. Preliminary grading and drainage plans have been provided and are under review, preliminary utilities as well, and conformance with the comprehensive plan has been indicated. Conformance with the major street plan has been indicated. The traffic study is still under review, um, with a recommendation forthcoming, uh, at the proper time. Because these subdivision plan requirements have been met, staff is recommending approval. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve? Steve, uh, the conversation we had with Meredith, what Meredith brought up about flipping something. We're looking at a preliminary plan that staff has looked at and approved as it sits. This will be our last opportunity to look at it and make any recommendations to either you as staff and/or council. I feel like that's putting some undue pressure on us just a little bit, and I mean, I'm not saying that, that I'm, I'm not for that, but the debate about flipping the building, where will that take place at?
Uh, it would be initiated by the applicant, uh, as far as alternatives, but certainly those things would be discussed, excuse me, with the city engineer, based on the traffic study, an approved traffic study.
Signs. Where would we have an opportunity to weigh in on signs if we wanted something different than signs? We really don't at, at this particular point in time, under the new zoning ordinance.
That's correct. We have sign requirements Jeff can address.
I'll let you have a drink too. Jeff Schmidt from planning staff. Um, I, I don't wanna defer to saying we don't have an opportunity to participate in those. We, we really did. Um, that was the last four years of the opportunities where the citizens and the public came forward and said, what should our light standards be? You know, how do we protect single-family homes for lighting? What should we do for signage? What should we do for landscaping and buffering? Where should evergreens go versus the other types of trees? All of that is in the ordinance right now. So when the questions come up about, do we get a chance to participate? It's a little bit different now, because we already put the restrictions upon the landowners on what they can do. So we believe through the new ordinance, we've done that, we've protected adjacent property owners. But I, what I wanna really make sure I get across is, if we haven't, if there's still things that need to be addressed, when we were up here with you guys in March and with city council, March 19th, we can still amend the ordinance. If, if things come back and they go, we don't like your light standards, okay, we can change that section of the code as we move forward. We bring that through planning commission and city council, and then we address the light standards or how much buffering gets done between adjacent properties. But now we have all that built into the code to protect everybody.
So what you're saying is all C4 is created equal?
Correct.
Uh, no matter where, what, or how?
At, but, correct, but I don't wanna downplay that, because now they have to have certain buffers in there. They have to have, if they're adjacent to certain land uses. In the past, you would negotiate that at the table, and sometimes neighbors got zero, and sometimes they got 60. Now we go, you have to have 45 feet. The neighbors know, and the property owners come in, they go, so I have to have 40? What if I don't wanna do 45 feet? We go, eh, you gotta have 45 feet. You gotta have this many trees, you gotta have a six-foot berm, you have to have this amount of fencing. There's not a negotiation anymore. You have to protect the adjacent properties.
Why are we looking at approving a preliminary plan?
Preliminary plan is the lot and block layout to start looking at where your utilities come in. What's the water pipe? Where's the drainage? What's the contours for the site? Um, and again, this is some of the good, great details I went over at the open house with those neighborhood beings. And Kenny, you always highlight that at these meetings, is, well, should some of these things been brought up at a neighborhood meeting? This is where Mike and I were there for three hours, and Mike's now spent another three hours with the neighborhood. We don't go in there and put in a water pipe now, because we don't know what the size is and what the type of development. We don't put the drainage pipes in until it's done, and then it has to meet standards. So we don't put the utilities in prior, and that includes roads. So we don't go put the road in first and then try to make it fit. You go, what's gonna go there, and then it has to fit today's standards. So this is preliminary. That's absolutely, that, it's named that for reasons. It's the preliminary plan. The next step is, as Steve mentioned, the developers' engineering plan. They used to call that the final plan for contractors at home. It was never a final plan, but it's the developers' engineering plan, and then they still have to do construction plans, then they can plat, and then they actually have to construct it to code. So it's not a rubber stamp saying, yeah, so this is what we're gonna get. Absolutely not.
Under the old zoning ordinance, we'd look at a preliminary plan, and the petitioner would have to bring in a final plan.
Nope, nope, you're, nope.
A conditional use permit?
Nope. You're confusing subdivisions and zoning. This is subdivision. Nothing changed in the newer, the old ordinance in regards to subdivisions. This is just your subdivision of land for utilities.
How will these folks know, or we know, what we're looking at here today is how it'll end up?
This, this sketch, as you see it here, this is their preliminary sketch, but it's just preliminary. That's the same process we went through the last 24 years for preliminary plans.
So at some point, they will present a final plan?
Nope. Nope. That, Kenny, you're getting final development plans confused in PDs.
Probably am.
In a planned development district, when they did Dolly Farm, it was a final development plan. We don't have PDs anymore. But in Dolly Farm Village or in Heather Ridge, they always had to do a preliminary subdivision plan, always, and that's never changed. Changed, there we go. That's still there today. That, that's, it's the subdivision versus the zoning. So this is how it's gonna be laid out per utilities. And that's why we, Steve's running them concurrently with Jason's, because when you start talking zoning, you go, well, what, what zoning are we gonna have? Well, you should look at, go, it's kinda that lot and block layout there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
For that explanation. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, Raquel Blount, Lloyd Companies. 101 South Reed in Sioux Falls. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and I as well wanna thank the council and the city and Walmart and the neighborhood for the cooperation. Um, I can assure you that things have molded and changed, and, you know, this has been a, a process. Um, it has not felt rushed. This has been something that we've been working on, you know, for quite some time with Walmart. They have been incredibly receptive to modifications, working with us, working with neighbors. Um, I can assure you the, the lengths of the meetings. Uh, this morning's meeting was great to be invited into a neighbor's home, hear their concerns. I can tell you that discussions have already been had today on possibilities and options of things that could be tweaked within the plans and things that we will work with, with the city on in order to try to accomplish those requests. Couple of the things I wanted to also let you know is, you know, we were hired by the Holman family to help them develop this ground. And from day one, when we had discussions with the Holmans, the quality of the development, the legacy that they wanted to leave, and what they wanted us to help them do with this, was always all about the city of Sioux Falls, the neighborhood, quality, and, and how could they make the best use of this land for the neighbors. Um, some of the things that I think, you know, aren't always known or said, that I think the neighborhood will be very pleased with, is the goal of the additional land. And that is the, the outlots that you see there. While it would have a C3 designation, there are already restrictions on the land that are in agreement between Walmart and the landowner with restrictions in place, such as building sizes. So currently, you know, those lots really can't accommodate more than about a 10,000 square foot building per site. And there's also certain use restrictions. So we heard tonight the concern with, you know, that there might be bars and liquor stores. Um, those are actually two things that are already excluded from possibilities on those lots. Um, any rest, there can be a restaurant, but they could not serve more than 50% of their sales in alcohol sales. It has to be more of a restaurant use than a bar use. Um, we're not, we're not able to place gas stations on those outlots. Nothing to do with pornography or, um, drug paraphernalia. You know, there's a lengthy list of things that, you know, Walmart wants to make sure that they're involved in a quality development. So things that, that we're hoping to do is, you know, take that office lot and have a, you know, a nice bank or a hair salon or spa that, that fits into that neighborhood, and then transition into that C2 zoning and provide for a coffee shop, a small bakery, you know, places that people in the neighborhood will, will want to go and, and shop and, and that will support the whole area. The Walmart, you know, provide them the opportunity to go over and get their items and, and then also have the boutique feel of some of the developments that the other neighbors have referenced. The developer and the landowner is very committed to the transitional zoning. You know, we've worked very closely with city staff to understand what transition zoning means, and this, this plan does account for those transitions to, to occur. So it, you know, it can't be that we don't follow that. And then also, as was mentioned with Shapes Sioux Falls, is, you know, the stringent restrictions that are now in place for proper buffering and landscaping, and, and we've already, you know, proactively gone out and had discussions with landscape architects to, to have them start to look at this and come up with, you know, some ideas and things that we can do in that, that setback area to, to beautify the, the neighborhood in the area. As was, you know, mentioned, the, the plating process is, is a very detailed, stringent process that goes through every department. And, you know, there's already been several discussions where we have engineering saying, you know, access, traffic, zoning. And I, and I wanna be clear, because it was mentioned that, you know, the traffic study wouldn't account for some of the things going on in the area. Um, it, it does, you know, the city has made sure that the engineers who are providing that study understand the growth and development, and they actually forecast that traffic out to fully develop, the, the area being fully developed. So the northeast commercial zoning and the multifamily zoning and the single-family housing, all of that will be taken into consideration, area schools. So the, the traffic will, in fact, be very representative of what this area has been and, and will be. And just wanted to reiterate that, you know, the, the seller is very committed to a quality development, and, you know, we wanna provide a first-class center. Any questions I can answer?
Raquel, nice job. Have you shared some of this with the neighborhood at the neighborhood meetings as to your, the landowner is gonna put a restriction on this as far as the size of the buildings?
And we have...
Alcohol was a concern for a neighbor, and it makes me wonder if she, she knew...
It depends on who was in attendance at, at what meetings, um, you know, where, we, we tried to convey that information at, at the times that, you know, we were corresponding, the, the large neighborhood meeting that we had and some of the smaller meetings, but, you know, some of those things are, you know, agreements between a buyer and a seller. So, you know, it's not always that we can present that in a, in a public forum, but I, I can tell you that, you know, those are in fact in place already on those outlots.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and it might put some ease to some of the folks that are still here tonight on this particular item.
We hope so.
Any other questions for, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you, good job. Uh, yes, is there anyone else here that'd like to address this, uh, item number? What item are we on, Denise? 12? Item number 12, yes.
Hi, my name is Lisa Robbie. I'm up here as a concerned citizen and a concerned mother. I appreciate all of your time, and I'm sure it's gonna be very long sitting there listening to everybody, and I appreciate all the city planning's time. However, um, when he made the comment that, you know, he's been at several meetings, he sits three hours with us on Saturday, and he sat there three hours the night before. I live in my neighborhood 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. My children play there, they walk to school. When you sit there for three hours and tell me it's gonna be safe, you're not there every single day or every sin... single day or every sing, single minute. I feel like, now we've put this plan up here, and this is what it's supposed to look like, this is what we're gonna do. Do you put a bike together, and then go look at the instructions and say, did I do this correctly? It's a bike, you can take apart, and you can redo it again. This is a development, this is how they wanna do it, this is their plan, we don't have the traffic study back, and they're saying this is what we wanna do. And so when you approve that, where is that undoing of that? How are we gonna undo that as the neighborhood? I guess that's my biggest concern. And, you know, the other thing is, there's been distrust created. We've asked questions before, and now tonight, there's all different answers. And I guess that leads me to be extremely worried that we've asked several different questions and gotten different answers all the time, now and then it's presented to you in a different way. I don't think that's fair to us as a neighborhood. My biggest concern is that I would ask that you do not pass this. This is a plan, this is what they wanna do, and they do not have all their ducks in a row. We don't have that traffic survey back, so how can you make a plan when you don't even have all your information?
Thank you, Lisa.
Good evening again, Dana Palmer. Mr. Larson, I think when we talked previously, I, I can't remember if it was Mr. Hanson that was up here, you had asked about access to the proposed Walmart off of Minnesota, and that seemed like a very significant issue to you. It's significant to all of us. The fact of the matter is, and nobody would give you a direct answer, which really upsets me, the fact of the matter is, the state will not allow access off of Minnesota Avenue. The officials from Walmart told us that this morning. And it greatly upsets me that people are hiding the ball and not giving you all of the facts. The fact of the matter is, you cannot access this development from Minnesota Avenue. Walmart knows it, I cannot believe that the city officials who were up here and questioned don't know it as well. It upsets me to no end that people were not direct and forward and frank with you. And I invite you to ask the official from Walmart that direct question, and let's see if he gives you that direct answer as he did to us this morning.
Thank you, Dana.
You bet.
Oh, Mr. Chair, Dana, just a real quick, from what I've seen, they're getting access off Minnesota, it's just not a signalized intersection.
Correct. What they explained to us was basically it would be one and a half access points. The full access would be off of 85th and Audi, and then they would only be able to have a right-in and a right-out onto Minnesota Avenue. So if you are accessing Walmart from the south, for instance, you have to go up to 85th, turn left on 85th, turn left on Audi, to get into that proposed development. Okay? So the only way to access it on, off of Minnesota is if you're coming down and going south on Minnesota.
That's what we see, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Rand Misco. Leave the experts up to the city planning here, I don't know all the details, but the way I just kinda heard this whole thing is that if this preliminary plan is approved, there's no need for a finalized plan. And if there's no need for a finalized plan, what ensures the residents or the city that any of these talked about safety changes have to happen? I guess I didn't understand that, so if somebody can clarify me, that would be great. As Dana referred to, we've heard from several people in traffic, and I know that's not the particular concern of, of your board here, is that Minnesota is not gonna have a signalized area entrance in and out of Walmart. It never will be the main entrance, it'll always be that currently proposed Audi and 85th. And I think that is our huge concern here. So a number of folks had discussed potentially moving the entrance off of Audi somewhere between Audi and Minnesota. That's a good idea, it's a step in the right direction, but approving this plan doesn't force anybody to even do that. Approving this preliminary plan, as I understand it, allows it to be built just as it sits there on a piece of paper. Please don't approve it until more thought is put into this.
Thank you, Rand.
Thank you.
You know, if you guys, just a second, you can sit down, I'm gonna ask Jeff to come up while this is fresh in her mind, 'cause it was what I was trying to get at too, in my mind, as far as these preliminary plans.
Okay. This is the preliminary subdivision plan. And so the preliminary subdivision plan talks about how you can subdivide your lots preliminarily, and how you can preliminarily get utilities to it. You still have to do a developer's engineering plan, which is, was previously called the final plan, and you still have to do construction plans. But those do not come before a public body. So that's, to answer his question, so do they not have, no, they absolutely have to do them, they just don't come before a public body. Going back to Lisa's great analogy about a bike, the preliminary is, I think I should have a handlebar and two wheels, but you didn't construct it yet. You still have to go to the construction drawings to put it together. Well, we're not there yet, we just know that we're gonna have two wheels and a handlebar. That's, we, we know that.
Randy, does, does that clear it up for you?
From what it cleared to me, it still doesn't force any additional changes beyond this. You can have a handlebar and a couple of wheels, still don't have a bike.
Thank you. Ross, you're back.
I promised to be brief, I was gonna go walk my dog, but I thought I'd stick around. On the, can you push that up just a little bit, please, Jeff, thanks. Just on the bottom, I, I put this back in front of you just to offer it for your consideration. Since we haven't adjourned yet, this is the staff proposal that has already been voted on and approved. However, I think, since it's still on the table, I think it's subject to amendment. The devil in these types of things is in the details. And if you look at how the neighborhood that's in question, and everybody is concerned about here tonight, has been scored, it's scored a four. And if you look at the very bottom, which I underlined, it talks about that neighborhood, and it says it has a high incompatibility rating adjacent to the proposed development. When you look at the comprehensive plan, the sheet that Jeff is putting up actually has the scoring. The scoring is done, as you folks know, on a one-to-five basis, five being the most compatible, one being the lowest. When you look down at that one, that's what I was reading to you, and that's that high incompatibility. That, to me, would require that score, just for that portion, to be amended. And I'm not saying it should be amended down to one, but I think for it to be scored a four, doesn't comport with the way the comprehensive plan reads. So I offer that for your consideration. I also offer it for, hopefully, there's some city council members who are watching tonight, and maybe that will plant the seed in their minds. But at the very least, your recommendation and this proposal will go to those folks for their consideration. And I think as long as we're being transparent, out in the open, and above board, we might as well all be speaking the same language, and I think that that's what I'm looking to do here. So any amendment to, to get that fixed would certainly be appreciated. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ross.
Hi, I'm Stacy Haber. On page 54 of the shape ordinance, it says that C4 is the heaviest area of commercial, and that it's gonna be in traffic across the city. I think that we all know that this is also going to serve Northwest Iowa, Canton, Harrisburg, and T. And we did have a nice neighborhood meeting this morning, and we did learn a lot from that. The traffic engineer told us that there is a 0% chance of having a main entrance on Minnesota Avenue. We talked to the Walmart executives about flipping the Walmart, as you talked about earlier, and they said, that they looked into that, and they said, no. We learned a lot this morning. So what we're left with is a main entrance, and I know that this is preliminary, but we're left with the main entrance at a residential road. So without that, you're taking the traffic from two highways into our, well, Highway of Minnesota Avenue, but then also the future Highway 100, putting it right into our neighborhood. That's a problem. It's a big problem. We have 426 kids, like Dana said earlier, in Journey Elementary, with one bus. Eighty of those kids live within two blocks of that main entrance. It's a huge problem. Everybody loves the shortcut, it's gonna increase traffic in our neighborhood. It's not even to mention the other schools that are currently being built, how it's going to affect that. It's a huge problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Mayor Hanson.
Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner, my name's Gary Hanson. You sound as a little bit bewildered at the beginning there when you were asking the questions. I think that's exactly how the entire neighborhood feels at this particular juncture.
It's easy for me to get bewildered, I'm not sure about everybody else. We're, we're doing a transition between the old zoning, zoning ordinance and the new zoning ordinance.
I appreciate that.
And that's where I'm struggling just a little bit. This will be brought to us as a conditional use under the old ordinance because of the size.
Right.
And, and I might be mistaken, I think we would have more flexibility to recommend things or, or not under the old method, but I could be totally wrong, too.
Exactly, I, I think that's, I'm educating myself to that process too, working on other things these days. But from a standpoint of understanding the process, when Mr. Schmidt said that it wa, well, this is a preliminary plan, and I guess in our, our minds, my mind, a preliminary plan's the first plan you look at, and then you make changes to that, and then you see the, the second or the final, and you, you vote on that one. And I was concerned with Mr. Schmidt's statement that, it sounded like he said that this does not come before a public body after that. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So at some juncture, I assume here, you have the opportunity, the responsibility, to say yes or no. And either it passes muster or it doesn't. Either you say, look, this type plan's got some challenges, we'd like you to take it back, we'd like you to dress it up, put a skirt on it, make it a little lipstick, see if it makes it look better. And from, you know, I think everyone in this room recognizes that there's challenges with this plan. The, the folks are not against a Walmart, what they're against is having all of the traffic from the Walmart directed right into their, their neighborhood. Now, we recognize, excuse me, that Minnesota's not going to have a major intersection onto, egress/ingress to, to Walmart. But yet, with all these discussions that have taken place, nothing's changed on, on, you know, we'll listen to you. And I'm not faulting the, the folks from the, from the planning. I think Walmart needs to make a change of their plan. They've had all of this input, I think we all recognize some changes that could be made to make it better. There was a presentation at one point, and this particular plat does not even recognize, it shows Lot 2 there, it's not divided into the Lot 1 and Lot 2, or, or whatever they were earlier, that we saw just, just half an hour ago. This is, this is different from that. So where are the changes? Why hasn't, why hasn't Audi been, been just eliminated in the traffic flow placed right out on 85th where approximately Lot 4 is? I mean, that would help everything. And that has been a very, very specific part of it. And so as commissioners, I mean, it's, it's really up to you at this juncture to say, no, this isn't perfect, bring it back as best as you possibly can. It's, it's got significant challenges. And I have to tell you, as, in the old process, when this would have crossed my desk, I, I, it wouldn't have even crossed my desk. The, the traffic engineer back then would have said, Dallas Hofer would have said, no. I know, I, the city grew by 60-plus percent while I was in office, 60-plus percent. We were running as fast as we could not to make problems for future city commissions, and trying to correct the ones that had been created previously. This creates a significant problem for the future of Sioux Falls. And that vision that we all have to try to have is, is right here in our laps right now. Say no, make the changes, bring it back so that you can look at it and make it a better plan to begin with. Because that's that distrust that was being talked about earlier. All of this discussion has taken place, but nothing has, has changed. And so you have an entire part of the community that's thinking, what's gonna change? We've gone all of this way with the date, and nothing's happened. So let's, let's, you guys have the, have the power, you have the authority as commissioners to make it better for the, for the city of Sioux Falls. And we're pleading with you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Hello again, I'm Bonita Schwan, the owner of the home at 85th and Audi. Commissioner Dunlap, I'd like to thank you for your comments about the very challenging position that I have been put in as a single-family home owner in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I would like to enlighten this commission on a comment that was made last night by Councilwoman Jamison. He said that I have been put out, hung out to dry. And then additionally, tonight, I heard the city planner, Mike Cooper, say that next time, I'll paraphrase, we won't let it happen again, what has happened to me at my home. You have an opportunity to fix this, this is not a done deal. This can be fixed by you, and why would this commission and the city put this liability on themselves that our city planner, Mike Cooper, just came before you and said they'll do better next time, so that doesn't happen to a homeowner in this city? I concur with the comments that Mayor Hanson just made, and I ask you to say no, and to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Amy Bodicker, and I'm also a fellow, fellow resident close to Bonita. And I think she's come forth many of a time, and I respect that to represent our neighborhood. I think it speaks in volumes. My 10-year-old son would tell you, with great power comes great responsibility, from one of his lines from his favorite movies. I feel like, in this situation, professionally and personally, that the due diligence has not been done to represent our neighborhood, to make sure that we have a solid plan where we all feel committed to. I will tell you, in the last two weeks alone, five homes within a block radius of me have put their homes on the market for sale. What does that mean to my value as a homeowner? I am a single parent, I have worked 20 years to get into this neighborhood and provide my kids with a safe neighborhood. This is not something I support nor want. Some of you, I feel tonight, are very engaged and have listened to the opinions of the people that are here tonight. There are some that I feel could care less what we have to say. I would ask, this is your opportunity to represent who your customer is, that are the residents of Sioux Falls. That's what I do when I go to work every day, is to make sure I represent my customer. I would ask that you guys say no to this tonight, for a good majority of the residents who live in this area, and to represent them well. That's why we're in the positions that we're in, to do the right thing. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Hello again, Brian Cutting with Walmart. A couple of things I wanna follow up on in the comments, we've heard, we've heard some good testimony tonight. First thing is, I, there have been some that have called to question my integrity, me personally, and I take issue with that. The testimony was given earlier that I told the residents at Ms. Bonita's house that there would be no access onto Minnesota. That testimony was later contradicted, saying that we would have a right-in, right-out. What I wanna set clear for the record is, what was shared at Bonita's house this morning is the same as was shared in the latter part of Ms. Dana's testimony, is, we have not advertised that we will not have access onto Minnesota. We have advertised that, as the plan shows here, you would have full access north-south onto 85th, and we have, as part of our application, right-in, right-out access onto Minnesota. What was said at Bonita's house is that we are confident that we probably would not get full signalized access onto Minnesota, given the proximity to the two streetlights at State Route 100 and 85th Street. So I wanna make sure the record is very clear there. Also, to Bonita, you know, respectfully, I would say that we are doing everything we can so that you are not hung out to dry. I think we had a very cordial meeting this morning, and this, again, is part of what we want to do, and what we are very grateful for, is we have had some wonderfully cordial meetings with the neighbors and with the community, in which we've been able to receive feedback and respond accordingly. And I expressed in this morning, it's very unfortunate, with the feedback we get, there is a time and a place to announce, reveal, show, pick your word, what it is that we have done to change the plan. Reiterating what Jeff has stated earlier, this is a preliminary plan. This is not a polished plan, this is not a finished plan, this is not a perfect plan. not a finished plan. This is not a perfect plan. This is a plan that, if approved, allows us to spend the hundreds of thousands of dollars that are required to get to that polished plan that has incorporated the details of the traffic study, that has incorporated the details of the sewage study, the drainage study, the water study, all that stuff. This allows us to get to that point where we say we have confidence that we can move forward with the project, and now we can allocate the resources to respond accordingly to the requests we've heard tonight. I also wanna make very clear, as part of this process, it is not required right now to have a traffic study. It is required to have what you have before you. We have met the requirements for the application, for the plating. It is not required for a traffic study. And frankly, during this part of the process, it is not yet revealed who the user is. Obviously, Walmart, again, trying to be a good neighbor, trying to be collaborative in this effort, we are not holding back that Walmart is going to be the user here. We are trying to be very open and collaborative with the community. And we have heard, again, in the very cordial neighborhood meeting this morning, what these concerns are. We have taken action on those issues today. This, I mean, this very day, we have submitted ideas. We have met with staff today, and we have ideas that we will continue, you know, now that we have their, we have heard staff's voice, that, you know, these are good ideas that we should pursue. These are ideas that we will follow up on as we take this preliminary plan and move forward to get that polished, final iteration of what the plan looks like. So, again, I just wanna stress, this is an iterative process, as the former mayor said. What is required tonight before you is not that polished plan. What is required tonight is the preliminary plan, which allows us to allocate resources to get to that final plan. And yes, things have changed. And as I said, changes will be brought forth at the appropriate time, at the appropriate venue, during this entitlement process, whether it's before the planning commission tonight, or in front of the city council in May. I've also made myself available to the community, to, you know, as we discussed this morning, to Bonita and to her neighbors. We want an open dialogue. As we work through this iterative process, we want an open dialogue with the neighborhood to make sure we're doing the right thing for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Any questions for Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
I'm just gonna come back.
Given some of the comments that you've heard from the citizens here, can you give any response or reaction to their concerns about possibly moving the entrance into this site off of Audi?
Sure. Sure. We have absolutely looked at that option. That is an option that we have spent time, our engineers are here, our traffic engineers. We have looked at alternatives. We find it favorable. Now, we have to, as part of that traffic study, which will be wrapped up in the coming weeks, as part of that traffic study, we have to determine, does moving the intersection to the east cause stacking issues or interferences with Eighty-Fifth and Minnesota? So, to the residents, I would say, again, as I have said, you know, iterative process, we heard them loud and clear this morning with that idea. We have followed up with that idea, and that is something that we are working at. Trying to think about some of the other, some of the other issues I could follow up on for you. Do you have specific questions that I can resolve?
I guess what I'm looking for is maybe more of a commitment on your behalf or Walmart's behalf to the citizens of this area.
Yes. We are absolutely committed to doing the right thing. We are absolutely committed to finding a traffic pattern, again, with the traffic study, with the request from staff. We are absolutely committed to finding a traffic pattern that best mitigates the concerns that we have heard tonight. This is not a, and, you know, I've expressed to the neighborhood as well, this is not a, you know, mow and go. We are not here dropping a store and taking off. We're residents here, too. Our market manager, our local Walmart executives lives very close to here. We have hundreds of associates that live in this city. So, we feel that we are residents here, too, although I am personally not a resident. We do feel responsibility to build our facilities in a manner that is favorable to the city of Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
Brian, I think the uneasiness is, if we approve this, you don't have to move that road, I don't think.
That's, and I'll defer to staff on that.
Yeah.
It's a good question, Kenny. In regards to access, and even as Gary Hanson mentioned, okay, you don't, the planning commission has no authority to approve access, and Walmart has no authority to. So, you can give Walmart up here all you want to say, will you please, he'll, he can say whatever he wants. He has no authority to approve access. The traffic engineers approve access. So, it doesn't do us any good to negotiate and to discuss that tonight, because even if you make a motion to say, we approve access, you can't grant it.
But Jeff, your staff is recommending approval of this preliminary plan.
Correct.
As it's shown to us.
Right. For preliminary layout, lot and block, as well as utilities. Because I, we're not negotiating what pipe size you need for the water pipe. Do, I mean, do we, are we concerned about the size of the drainage pipe? All those issues get discussed as they move along the track. And we're confident, which is what Walmart's saying, and we're confident that the right water pipe's gonna be put in, and if they don't, they can't go forward, that the correct amount of drainage will be taken care of. If they don't, they can't go forward.
I hear what you're saying. I understand it. But I think folks here are going, we'll have no opportunity.
No, they don't.
To participate in that discussion.
Correct.
With you and Walmart.
No.
And I guess you come down, is that right or wrong? And I don't know.
And I don't know if it's right or wrong either, you know, 'cause I don't wanna get up here and say, 'cause we discussed this, and, well, that's the way we've always, that's the way the law is written. If we change the laws, I gotta period and say, if we wanna change the law, we can change the law and say, every developer's engineering plan will go through a public hearing process, and every construction plan will go through. But that's for everybody, not for this corner. It's gonna be for every development, and that's what we know is not gonna happen.
Well, you could make an argument, a development this size, you could say everyone's gonna do it, but that's for another day. Yes, Michael.
With all the discussion that's been going on about the access, the way that this lot and configuration is, I just asked the petitioner in the back of the room if they would consider requesting a deferral of this until we get through the zoning process and the traffic study. Because that's really gonna determine if there's gonna be proposed changes to this lot and access layout.
Mike, I can't speak for the other commissioners. I like that idea, but I'm one voice, and I don't even vote unless there's a tie.
I'm just saying that would give us more finality as far as what exactly we're being asked to approve or not approve.
And I don't wanna speak for anyone, but if I were voting on this, it'd make me feel more comfortable knowing I was voting on the plan.
Speak up, guys.
Mr. Chair, and I kinda concur with that, too, because then we got the traffic study in. That is part of the reason that I voted no on the rezone, is the uncertainty of the traffic study. And I got a, I'm still a little, I got two opinions from lawyers on the legality of this, based on last night's annexation. So, those are my concerns right now.
Mr. Chair, you need to probably ask for a motion.
You know, who yet wants to speak? How many do we have here? This young fella?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds? Come on up.
You're on. David Christian. I'm a resident in the Twin Eagle Estates. I'm kinda like Bill O'Reilly or six-four, and a simple mind. As far as traffic access to me, that Audi, if that would be a ride-in, ride-out, and the same on Minnesota, but how about put a section of that 100, Highway 100, in, have your main access off that Highway 100? All that traffic from the south and northwest Iowa, the southern region, to have an access in the south. I think that would simplify this whole thing and obviously move the project forward. Thank you.
Thank you for the idea. Thank you for the comment. One more. Craig, did you wanna speak to us?
Craig Lloyd, 101 South Reed. First of all, you know, it's kinda like Ken, old dogs, you can't train us very well. And I'm having a hard time following what you meant was, and I read that thing two or three times. You know, you got two main highways, one that's gonna come, God knows when, but it's, that landlord can't do anything to the south. I mean, they're landlocked wherever they're at today, by the line that was drawn many years ago by Mr. Hanson, that that's as far as we can go. We can't develop. We can't do anything, so we can't go any further. On Minnesota Avenue, you're, that's a federal or a state highway. It's been that way for well over 200 years, probably, because it's been there that, in that making for many years. And then you got Eighty-Fifth Street, and that's been a arterial road forever. I really, really feel sorry for Mrs. Swan and where her house is located. You know, if you could turn back the clock like we always want to, and say, well, why did we do this, and why did we do that? And I agree with one of the speakers tonight, you said, planners have gotta be one of the smartest people in the world to look out thirty-five years and say, this is what the town's gonna look like. I've been trying to do it for forty years, and I don't think I've done a very good job of it. But, we still have the issue of what to do with the neighborhood, residential neighborhood and the commercial development. And I guess I'd challenge anybody to go around this town and tell me where you're gonna put a commercial development that you don't have housing across the street. We fought it out at Dolly Farm. We have residential housing right across the street. We got residential to the east. We got residential to the west. We got residential to the north, and a little bit to the south. We had the same thing even when we did Meadows on the River. Here's an area right next to all the commercial. We had people complaining from the bus. We had people complaining from Western Heights. It's a fact, a matter of development that that's where we're gonna run into. Try to landscape yourself, buffer yourself, and do all those things, as we said before. The humans want a nice place. They pointed to Dolly Farm. We tried to do a nice thing out there, and we think we've accomplished most of it. Did we meet everybody's expectations? I'd have to say no. But, that's the quality that we'd like to see here. We think Walmart can deliver that. They've done it before for us, and they've always lived up to what they told us they were gonna do. One thing is, is I keep on kinda trying to figure out this traffic thing off of Audi. And I understand if you had four thousand cars a day going in and out of Walmart, you're gonna have additional traffic on Audi and Eighty-Fifth Street. But I'd challenge any one of you to leave Audi, go north, and try to find those schools. I did it today. I hit two dead ends before I had to turn around at the cul-de-sac, go out, go back around, go around over there, finally found where Journey School was by going that way. So, it's not gonna be a shortcut. I can guarantee you that unless you're enamored by mazes. And, so, some of this is being overplayed. Is it a fact that you're gonna have additional traffic on Eighty-Fifth? Yes. To come through the neighborhoods, I'd have to tell you no. You might do it once, but that's the last time you're ever gonna do it. And so, I wanna thank you for your time, and I would encourage you to defer this so we can work more with the neighbors in the city.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions for Craig? Folks, one minute. This is the last one. You've got one minute.
Thank you. My name's Erin, and I live very close to Bonita, and I thank Mr. Lloyd for his comments. However, my kids, when they're at school, they are safe at the school. They're on the school property. As he's driving around, our road's getting lost. That's where my kids are playing, as long as, as well as the fifty-four other children on my street, the first street off of Eighty-Fifth Street. But what I really wanna come up here and ask you for is to please don't rush this. You guys don't need to make the decision tonight. You guys can be our voice to Walmart. We have heard from them numerous times, this commitment to make changes to the plan, to make it better for us, to listen to us, and we've seen none of that yet. So, please be our voice. Make it so that they have to come back with that plan and present it to you when it is with our considerations taken in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will close public testimony. Chair, would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we defer action on item twelve until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Would there be a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair, I think this is a good idea, especially in this case, because of everything we've heard, and the fact that we have a willing applicant at the same time, ready to put more work into this plan and bring it back. Hopefully, thirty days is enough time.
Steve, Andy, is that Phil?
I concur.
Jess? Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to the last item on a night's agenda. What is our last item, Denise?
To adjourn.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
How about a second?
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you, folks.